One-time recognition of the additional work without updating the hourly wage. Is there a process there that would make sense that we could discuss?
Yeah, I don't have a specific opinion on that except to say that you're now going down a really different track, which would have all sorts of need to put some parameters around it for future use. What you have before you is a motion that's just changed salary ordinance. And I understand from a policy standpoint, you don't do it. But from a legal standpoint, that's a no-brainer. You change it, you change it back, all good, no questions. Stipending, I can't give you a firm opinion, I've never looked into it, but it sounds like an awful lot of additional potential legal entitlements to get that done right.
You don't know what the time.
That was a real issue with State Department of Accounts and why we took all the stipends out, put the salary ordinance. That was.
Realistically, we want to hire a highway engineer as quickly as possible, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if we agree to $2 an hour as an increase, and then by good fortune, we were able to find the right candidate and get them hired quickly, she may not realize the increased pay that she deserves for the work that she's done because the timeframe that she got $2 an hour was shortened because we were lucky enough to hire somebody ASAP. So flip of the coin here. From her perspective, I was thinking a stipend, which and I understand there may be too many hoops to jump through. Or this may drag out for a long, long time and she'll get paid and we'll all go down the road. I don't know, I'm just trying to discuss it.
I'm also looking at that list and a lot of these things, I would see. I mean, the administrative secretary's responsibilities and checking Paul's email. And me, the engineer, can check their own email.
I think Mr. Johnson County Attorney wanted to say something also. Looks like, otherwise you'd just like standing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're open for discussion, aren't we?
We're, the motion's on the floor, seconded and in discussion.
This came up because the commissioners met earlier this evening and Commissioner Brown was not present. The engineer is the one that I think had conversations with the administrative assistant about compensating for the additional duties that the administrative assistant had taken on. And so I, Commissioner Hilton is here. And I did not talk to Commissioner Brown before coming today, but I am familiar with the operations of the office in the Highway Department because I probably, right after Commissioners' arranged Board of Auditor. Highway Department is the one I have most interaction with. The job description for administrative, first one is to just take out every, and nobody brought up personality or names, but I think you have to look at this objectively. The job changed, not because the administrative assistant asked for more duties, but because of the circumstances in the office. So the description as it is right now is not correct. Now, that's not unusual. A lot of people work with job descriptions that are outdated and need to be changed and addressed. So that's not any reason to be all that concerned, it should be updated. However, this is not a situation where the pandemic has caused somebody to have to fill in for and do duties of their coworker in their office because this coworker is not a coworker, this is a department head that has specific responsibilities. And he, the highway engineer is an employee and the administrative assistant is an employee. They are not a deputy. It's a given that if you're a deputy of an elected official and that elected official is a president, you're responsible for the duties of that official. That is not the case with an employee or with an employee department head. So I looked at the information that Kelsey, the administrative assistant, sent to me. And I saw a number of things that go on that aren't actually mentioned there, although some of them are referred to. And that's why I distributed this bullet point for the duties that I think are managerial that are being performed in the absence of a county highway engineer. The budget and financial management, actually putting the budget together, managing what they can afford and so forth. Those kind of decisions are managerial. Those aren't something an employee who is, who reports only to the department head does.
Could you speak for one second Ted? You said there's, did you say bullet points?
Yes.
Oh, did the handwritten thing, I wasn't thinking.
Yeah, so procurement deals with, here, everything that the Highway Department procures. And it's not just the annual bids. There's a lot of paperwork and a lot of judgment that goes into procurement in working with vendors and so forth. So it's procurement is normally not an employee's that reports to a department head. It's not their responsibility. So that's managerial also. And then contract administration, that's especially true in the Highway Department. Because the vendors that submit bids to do supplies for the county, this would also pertain to contracts that are with other entities and agencies and so forth. There's a lot of things that go into that require the judgment of a manager. And it is not just administrative assistants. The next one is grant and federal aid applications and compliance. This is a big growth area for any municipality. The availability of community processes, grant and reimbursement programs for bridge inspections and so forth. Those carry within significant legal responsibilities. That would otherwise, if those aren't met in the way that the Indiana Department of Transportation requires, then the county or municipality will receive those grants in financial aid. So that's a significant part. Then the next one is personnel management. Now payroll, in the sense of turning in the payroll, making sure it's correct, that's probably administrative. But the personnel management component of this, the job description for administrative assistant is that they report directly to the county highway engineer. So there is nobody for the administrative assistant to report to. The Board of Commissioners aren't, aren't the, they look to the highway engineer for their reports. So the supervision of the employees may differ between employees that are road, working on the road, working in a shop versus those inside. I don't know, but I know there's a degree of personnel management. There has to be somebody in charge to be able to discipline employees and to enforce the policies of Carroll County for the personnel of the Highway Department. So that's a managerial responsibility. And then the last point is accountability. As I said, the job description of the administrative assistant is that they're incumbent only to the highway engineer. So if for no other reason, there needs to be a, something documented to change what these changes are. I'm not here to advocate for a dollar amount or anything on behalf of the administrative assistant. I think she gave you some information on that. What I think solves the problem, and I'm not sure that you can legally increase the pay of administrative assistant or any other employee that you're, you can only make change if you've got a different position. You don't have a different position yet. So my suggestion is, and this would be something that would be referred to the HR consultant. But my suggestion would be that whatever action the council takes to date is not in the form of granting an increase in pay. That it is a, it's setting the pay for a position to be called Highway Department Manager, which would be a temporary position. And it would be so noted on the job description. It wouldn't have to come in the minutes of the council. It would be in the description that it is a temporary position to cover the managerial duties of that job, the highway engineer during the interim. That there is no incumbent highway engineer or highway supervisor. So the additional bullet points that I put down, I think need to be covered. I think the list of duties that the administrative system has provided is a very good start. And I think you've already got enough to know that there is a gap between responsibility and compensation. And you've already kind of, you haven't voted on the motion yet. But I would suggest that you consider reframing this not as an increase in pay because that, I'm not sure it's new in the middle of the year. You haven't changed anything, you recognize and changed everything. I think it needs to be tied to a description. I would be recommending to the board, and I will be recommending to the board, that they approve a creation of a position called Highway Department Manager to serve in the interim until a permanent replacement is for the highway engineer. Whether that's an engineer, a P E, or whether it's another form of supervisor. So that would be my suggestion. I wanted to come at another angle. That's all I'm going to say about that part. But as far as setting the amount, the administrative assistant has given you some numbers from surrounding counties. And what I can tell you from my experience, I was in Doc's attorney when I started practice, in the Attorney General's office. And I worked in the contract section as well as did what, I did condemnation trials for the Highway Department. And then became a county attorney. And there was an administrative assistant for the commissioners. When I became a county attorney, the commissioners hired your former auditor who was outgoing as a administrative assistant. So they had an administrative assistant all the time that I was the county attorney. And the reason I'm telling you this is a lot of what the Highway Department does is done by an administrative assistant for commissioners in other counties. They do the paperwork relating to the annual bids and returning performance bonds of payment, not payment bonds, but performing bid bonds, returning bid bonds, notifying. A lot of that's done by the administrative assistant, not by the Highway Department, not by the auditor's office. So if this position, administrative assistant, is encumbered with all these duties without fair compensation, that's an invitation to move on. I think that Carroll County needs to compensate for the forms of those duties. They are being taken care of in a way that is not burdensome for the auditor or for the commissioners. So I think some consideration should be given to that. That the pay that the Clinton County Highway personnel in their office that's in an equivalent, somewhat equivalent position to this administrative assistant is actually, a lot of that work is performed by the commissioner's administrative assistant. The bid tabulation and a lot of the work, the budget work. The administrative assistant does the, does the agenda for the commissioners and a lot of it puts together the budgets of the different departments that are reported to the commissioners. So I don't think that the amount that's in there that's shown for, at least for Clinton County, it doesn't reflect the fact that a lot of that work is done for the Highway Department by an administrative assistant who's another separate employee with the county. So I said enough, so I'll be glad to answer any questions you got.
I had one. So it would be your intention to go to the commissioners, ask them to create a new job description for a temporary position, which would be the Highway Department Manager, is that correct?
That's correct. That's, but I would make further recommendation. And I don't have anybody's authority to say this, but I believe that the council has enough information on what the duties of this position is already. And they've also got a track record of four months last year that you were doing this. So that's pretty well going to be what the job is going to be. So my suggestion would be, is that you make the motion, whatever that amount of that compensation is, be effective now and direct the HR consultant to go ahead and prepare the description. But you've got enough information, you've got a written record of what the duties are that are being performed. And I think you've got sufficient support that you could make the motions for the compensation to be increased effectively now. That's my opinion.
Lauren, sorry, we.
That's okay.
We got sidetracked.
That's fine, that's fine. I'd like to thank Ted and Kelsey also for being there. I don't think you ever want to be here.
I looked at salary ordinance, the new salary ordinance, and I noticed that she's one of the less paid employees in Carroll County Highway Department. Is that correct? Unless it's her fault. And there's one person who did that job. And she has, I know in the past, has been asked to do things outside of the job description. See if things get, things get put on her, but they've really got noticed. And I think it's a work position. I look at what we've gone through trying to hire an engineer. And we resubmitted her for more applications. And at the pay rate of an engineer, I think Carroll County is going to be very fortunate to find an engineer. Go for it, Michelle. And I, what Ted said made a lot of sense. I think that there's definitely need for some restructuring or management. And I think we have a person here that, while I can qualify for, but if it's a painful, do more than this. If we have a good employee, we don't take care of employees, we don't have good employees. I'd recommend the $3.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. The current motion is to amend the administrative assistant's pay rate by an increase of $2 on his current salary. Reopen that to the council for discussion.
I'd like to add, one reason I said $2 and not $3, not specifically Kelsey, it's more about the highway drivers would then be about even with Kelsey. And to put, you know, put her a dollar above them, I didn't know if that would create problems with 27 drivers. You know, and that's my thought on that.
So specifically to this motion, commissioners, council has spoken against it. So, but this is the motion on the floor for the pay increase here. So that's what we have to keep our attention to on this motion.
I guess I just saw the honor of duty we said about it. I know, I know she stepped up more and beyond. But we also have a foreman who also is serving up the law and law. So how long has it been before the foreman comes to us and says, we upped her pay? They haven't found a genuine year yet. Now we have a foreman in here that wants more pay. And this is where we open up a big can of worms. And I know you just have to look at the financial and the future aspects of it.
Lauren, are the commissioners set to draft a new job description to create a new position?
We haven't discussed that. We don't need to be looked at. I know it needs to be looked at.
The way it sounds from what she's saying is that your engineer position needs to be looked at because she's doing engineering work even when the engineer is here.
She's not, she can do engineering work, but she can assist an engineer.
She did with Paul, she did with Paul, right? Well, honestly, I mean, some of it, I'm like, we just need to be.
Yes, so she's sitting right there that she's doing engineering work. And what should we add?
She's preparing grants for a lot of money in this grant business. She got a hundred, you gotta have a dot on top of the I, or it should be Mrs. Better specialized.
You know, my thought is, let's keep our eye on the ball here. Let's get her some more money effectively immediately and try to rectify a bad situation. I mean, I know there's a ton of detail we can just churn through for hours and hours and hours. But, you know, she came for a reason today. And I'd like to see if we can, you know, satisfy the reason. I guess we'll put it to vote and see who votes for it and who votes against it. But, you know, if it gets the job done, that's more important than not getting the job done and passing it back to commissioners and when they need them, then they'll blah, blah, blah. You know, this will take months and months and months. And I think the way to get things done is get it done.
Real quick, before we call for a vote, Ted, can you restate or clarify what you said specific to a deputy and their responsibilities as a deputy versus her responsibilities as a current administrative assistant?
As an employee.
As an employee. Can you just restate your point there, please?
The administrative assistant is an employee. And the deputies in the courthouse are deputies to the elected official. And they are responsible and they are authorized to perform the duties. I think it's in nature of their job descriptions. And that is not the case with the administrative assistants. The administrative assistant is an employee. Has no obligation to perform those duties.
So I'm asking that clarification based on the concern that I have for precedence here. That once we take a vote on this, dependent on the outcome, you could open the floodgates for every other person that has stepped in and done additional to then want their raise.
As example, a foreman.
Right. Well, each one has to be looked at individually. I don't know if Foreman is doing duties of the engineer or not. I don't know that. I do know that he was present when the administrative assistants and the commissioners meeting. And the impression.
I'm just using as an example, I don't know.
Yeah, he was supportive of this. He was very much supportive of this.
I'm not even, I don't even know who he is.
Well, I think Lauren may know.
Yeah, because I see.
He's a lot of supportive of this.
And that's my question to you, Paul, is next month, when the next person comes and the situation arises again, is your aspect going to say, let's just give him $2 an hour and let's pop?
I think we just go through everything as it comes personally. That's how you have to handle life. Everything comes, you know, you just have to look at it as it comes. And so that's my thought.
Please, sir. I think that the crux of all of this is the job description. And the formally good example of someone who may pick up a lot more volume of work, but the character of the work that's taken. You pick up more volume, that's part of life. That doesn't necessitate a change in job description. And it happens all the time in every sort of job. To me, it's different if you are picking up additional duties, particularly if they're technical duties, such as writing grants and other engineering. This position is stepping into a spot that was filled by a professional engineer. And so to me, whatever you do now or in the future, it's critical that you tie it to the job description. And I think that's, you know, what the county attorney indicated. And I believe that that is the, that's the stop to the slippery slope of everybody wanting it. Because the next time it occurs, in my view, the question would be, well, are we changing the job description? And if the answer is, well, yeah, we got to change that job description, then you should consider a change in rate. If the answer is no, we're not changing the job description, this person just has to be working more in the same job. I think those are two different things. So my thought is, whatever happens here on the vote, if you focus on the change in the job description being the reason that there is an increase, then I think you avoided the policy problems that are very real, as you've all said. Everybody wants a raise.
Well, I think Kelsey's obviously stated that she assists, you know, some different, I mean, she's assisted in the past with some of these other things. However, the entire responsibility is now on her shoulders. Where that tells me that the responsibility of the position has changed substantially. I mean, we could be looking at hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in grants for a $2 an hour change please. You know, my thought, in the job description that we have in front of us on page two, it says performs related duties as assigned on the top of the page. So that's kind of what's going on right now. She's performing additional related duties as assigned. And so I, you know, I'm favorably to get it done now. And that covered a lot of what Ted brought up, I think.
Well, I see that same line and, you know, there's, I look at it differently. I see performs related duties. That's what every job description within the county government bases on. And if you have 40 hours of work a week, it's going to move from this to the week. It's going to stay, if you still work 40 hours. We're not talking about somebody working 100 hours and getting paid for 40. Still an hourly, hourly position in the job description. So it's not like, you know, we've taken a salary, employee used to work 40 hours and that's going to do twice as much work. From a policy perspective, you know, I agree with Ted in that. I mean, if we are going to look at this, Lauren, could I ask you, but do you remember the date that Paul resigned?
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry.
13.
Yeah, it was the second, yeah, second Friday in November, November 13.
But that was when he left. When did he resign?
That was the resignation date.
But he gave notice, what, six weeks before then?
It was like two or three, maybe more than that.
Okay, so.
I think it was October or April.
I thought it was closer to first October, but I mean, regardless.
It could be, I don't, I'm trying to think.
I don't know. My point being, we're three months into this, we were in a budget cycle at that time. The job description wasn't even considered for discussion during the budget cycle. Now we're three months after that, closing in on four months after that. And now it's, you got to make a decision right now. So that's.
Well, I think.
Well, we didn't know we would not have a highway engineer at that point. Now we do not have a highway engineer at that point. It's not likely we may not have one.
Anticipating we'd have one sooner.
I don't understand that. We gave them the $20,000 more. So you're saying we even need to go more to get it in there?
Possible.
I think he told his employer and they.
Yeah.
Yeah. The county, the state.
If I remember right, Paul said, I mean, he stayed on and he was there to advise. And I mean, it wasn't like he just checked out, I'm done, I'm gone. I mean. I mean, he, he was there, he was still helping. I remember that.
I thought it was like six weeks back as well. So is there any further discussion? The motion on the floor, just to recap, is to increase the currently hourly raise. This would not, not like, excuse me, to increase the currently hourly wage on the salary ordinance. This would not affect anything in terms of the realisation department or job description. We're just voting on the, the wage on the current salary ordinance and an amendment for, of $2 for the administrative assistant for the highway. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Propose, same side? Three, three vote. So the motion does not pass for majority. Is that correct, Eric?
That is correct.
I would really encourage the commissioners to draft a new job description and get that to us. And we can talk about a long-term fix rather than a Band-Aid on something that I think is warranted, but the process needs to be right.
I don't disagree with it, but the timeline that we have, we'd have time for a process that's required. But hope you understand that.
What?
I just hope we don't lose a good employee.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, if there's a material change, in my opinion, and I, we're talking off motion here, but like if there's a fundamental change to a department and how it's gonna be operated, it's a different discussion than the discussion of times are tough, we gotta pay somebody more. So like, if, if that's part of the discussion, um, you know, I, I, we've done that on the year before to where, you know, something has materially changed to how a department operates. The other question is like, how, how is it gonna be after we hire a high engineer? And do we wanna spend hundreds or thousands of dollars to investigate a job description if we're gonna have a highway engineer every day and it's gonna change? So.
Well, I think I'm tagging that. What, what part of this do you not consider a material change? What part of this...
I don't know. I mean, that's a great question.
Do you not intend to change? I see it has a material change.
That's not, that's not for our discussion. That is, we are the financial discussion. That goes back to the commissioners. They are a, uh, they, they need to work on that. And then they need to, like Tim said, bring it to us and then we financially decide. But I, I agree with Tim. They're, I think they need to look at their job descriptions and reformat how they're, how they want employees and who they want doing all of it.
But I don't disagree with what you're, the premise you're, what you're saying.
Yeah.
But like, I mean, this, this is a conversation in and of itself. And, well, not only that, it's like, and is it gonna persist? You know, I mean, you know, what, what does it look like on the backside of hiring a new highway engineer? And then are we gonna do all of this for two months or a month or whatever it's gonna take to have a new highway engineer? And I, I don't know. It's, there's just no good, I mean, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate you. And I, you know, I've been in the highway garage, I don't want to come anytime. You know, and, and you've always been very helpful. I appreciate it. And I know that this is a lot of work, sincerely, it's a lot of work. It's just a policy issue that is, you know, a ten year play, but like, how do we, how do we make one person that person like for this one thing? I just really struggle with that. I appreciate you coming in and, uh, work with the commissioners and continue to have a conversation about how we structure the department in the future. I, I know that you've been critical in, in, in the success that we've had with our community crossing the grants and, and the organization of the department in general. I do wanna make sure that you're compensating according to your skill set and, and the work that you do. We've just gotta do it in a way that makes sense globally as a, of a policy. Because this isn't about any of the seven of us. It's not about commissioners. It's about, I mean, we could all be gone in a week. And, you know, it's, it's our duty, it's a solid policy that steers the gov, or the county government in a disciplined way. So again, thank you so much. Sincerely appreciate coming in. I know you didn't want to spend an hour sitting here, uh, doing this, but it's a, I mean, it's a very important discussion for us to engage. Thanks a lot.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certain efforts today, young man. And we... Yeah. Okay, so next item on the agenda is the EMA director to discuss additional, uh, additional grants.
This will actually be easy, because Ted talked about it. I won't actually have to ask for the additional, uh, because it's gonna get advertised. And I, and I'll work with her on getting that done. And since I'm up here, we'll just, we'll run it under a capital asset line because it's equipment. That will be coming.
But I have to have them, we'll get together.
Okay. The grant is, just to give you a little background on it, it was a state homeland security grant that was, was applied for in February of last year. The approval letter came back in September of last year after all the documentation got signed. It became fully executed in November. So we can start spending that reimbursable money once this gets approved. And it's all part of the capital improvement plan that was given to you guys at the last...
What was the name of this grant?
State Homeland Security program.
I was remem, the 130.
Pretty good. Just in general, everything, I'm gonna say okay is the wrong word, but anything from an EMA perspective that, on the horizon here that you need to discuss?
Uh, there's a lot.
Maybe married another conversation.
Yeah, um, there's a, so the help, with the CARES Act committee, we got the health department's trailers here. It's right now being stored out at the transfer station. The mobile EOC health incident trailer ran into some hiccups on the manufacturing side due to the fact of COVID hit the supply line, of course. That'll be here in about six weeks. And then once these grant trailers, the equipment, capital assets start coming in, we're gonna have to start looking for a place to store this stuff. All together with then, by this summer, there's gonna be about $400,000 of equipment coming in the, the county's coffers. And I, I would really hate to see this stuff set outside. You know, trailers will last up to 20 years if you get them inside, when they're not being used. If you leave them outside, the weather takes a toll on them.
Is the plan being still what, for listeners, I think that still, or isn't it?
Like, we gotta revisit it when we need some more discussions.
Anything else, Ryan? Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is it still?
Yeah, yeah.
Afternoon.
Thirty-two more minutes here. Okay. I know it's not part of the agenda, but I at least wanted to cover it real quick. Any follow-up questions in regard to the year-end commissary report that I recently distributed to everyone?
I did have a long question. Go ahead, I'll, I'll, I'll go back.
Okay.
If noted here.
All right. Okay, and a lot of what I'm going to present this morning is, and some of you may have already heard this, but I presented, obviously, to the commissioners on Monday morning. And I've got a couple of different titles that I've placed on this presentation. And that is new direction on new jail and/or the reset slash compromise button. My three point, main point I wanted to make this morning relate to, number one, potentially scaling back on the number of beds with our project from anyone, anywhere from 80 to 100 beds, rather than 108, 112, what we've been discussing. As you well know, the state of Indiana Department of Corrections considers a jail full of 80%. So 80% of 80 is 64. 80% obviously of 100 is, is 80. Bear in mind, with that lower number, we could potentially have to add on in five, 10 years. Who knows what society's gonna produce for us? So we may have to add on. Coupled with that idea of new jail numbers is the possibility of providing a work release wing, which is either a, a structure very close to the new jail structure or a separate building on the same complex as the county, New County Jail. Obviously, the construction related to work release is much cheaper than, than the jail itself. And so that's something to consider. I would suggest that we would encompass the capacity of being up a whole 25 individuals for that program. We're a small county, so I don't know, you know, whether or not we will achieve that, if we'll go above that. Obviously, that's driven by the courts and what they decide to do with, with various defendants. And then thirdly, the third point I would, and more so, this is in line with the commissioners. But the suggestion I would make is to hire Garmont Construction Management and bring them on board as the construction management company. And I've, obviously, I have my brother Sheriff Chris Sanders from Fulton County here with me this morning. With your permission, I'd like to hear, I'd like to have you hear from them because they're having success in Fulton County. They're in essence in the middle of their new jail in Fulton County. And what their construction management company is, is Garmont. And Sheriff Sanders can speak to that if he was granted the opportunity to speak. Also with us is Greg Whaling, our primary architect with Elabotus, in the quarter over here. And Greg may go, field day questions or follow-up that may come up here this morning. But a few comments that I have is that I think we all know and accept that the county jail is the foundation for any county's criminal justice system. Whether it's Carroll County, Georgia, Carroll County, Maryland, or Carroll County, Indiana, county jail is the foundation. If individuals don't make it through probation, if they don't succeed with work release, if they don't succeed with community corrections, that's where they go back to, county jail. Okay? So we need to make sure that we have an adequate facility. Initial point I wanted to make in regard to the smaller number of beds from an operations cost savings, it means that as a sheriff, whether it's me or my individual who follow me, we have less personnel that they would have to hire to bring on board and manning that, that new jail. Once this virus is at a, a low situation or even eliminated, I foresee that we're gonna see a huge swelling of, of our jail numbers where we currently are. As of this morning, we were 20. However, we had two females and we're going to women's, to Rockville facility, women's facility, Department of Corrections, so we're gonna be back at 18 here this afternoon, a 34-bed facility. Granted, I know that's, that's very low, almost half of what our maximum is right now. But looking down the road, I can easily see us really starting to, to gain numbers. Since late 2018, we've spent over a quarter of a million, $250,000 in paying other counties to hold our, our inmates.